I Hate Politics is a podcast about a human activity we love to hate. And this is the I Hate Politics candidate interview with Gaithersburg City Council candidates alphabetically Dave Bellegarde, Philip Cook, Lisa Henderson, Jimmy Hernandez, and Jim McNulty. I'm Sunil Das Gupta and you're listening to I Hate Politics. For those who don't know, Gaithersburg is an incorporated city astride Interstate 270 on the northern or up county side of Montgomery County, Maryland, which itself sits on the northwest corner of Washington DC like an oversized crown on a small body. Gaithersburg has a population of 70,000, the ninth largest city in Maryland, and is known to be one of the most diverse cities in all of the United States. Since its incorporation as a city in 1968, development in Gaithersburg has pretty much followed the rest of the county. Fast and rich on the west side, slow and neglected on the east side. The city is governed by a mayor and council, has its own police and parks departments, but not its own public school district. The city holds its own elections and the next one is scheduled for November 2nd. Maryland voting has been going on since August 30th. Early voting is scheduled for October 23rd and 24th. As Gaithersburg prepares to vote, I Hate Politics is featuring interviews with Gaithersburg mayoral and city council candidates in a series of weekly episodes this month. These interviews are conducted by I Hate Politics up county correspondent, the one and only Andrew Sondry. This week he interviews five Gaithersburg City Council candidates. You can look in the episode description for the timestamps for each interview. Andrew's conversations with Gaithersburg candidates won't tell you everything you want to know about them. But unlike usual candidate forums with 20 questions covering the range of issues and limiting candidates to a soundbite, I Hate Politics candidate interviews are in-depth discussions about one issue that the candidate has chosen and should give you a deeper insight into the candidates, including their ability to plum an issue. Music for this episode comes from Kara Lefchenko, an Arlington singer songwriter who is the choir director in Centerville High School in Fairfax County, Virginia.
Thank you so much for joining us today, Dave Bellegarde, candidate for Gaithersburg City Council. I want to get started, you said that you wanted to talk about economic development as your topic tonight. So I wanted to get started just hearing what you think the city of Gaithersburg can do to help create jobs.
Absolutely. Let me start off with the, just a quick statistic. The city actually has lots of jobs. There's nearly 40,000 people in our city that are employed and working. And there's about 39,000 jobs in our city. So we've done a great job at job creation. We're not just a bedroom community. Another side of that statistic though is only 20% of those nearly 40,000 people that live in Gaithersburg that work, only 20% of them actually work in the city. I want to make sure that we have jobs for all our residents. We've done a great job of being a biotech hub, and I would not change that. Currently about 18% of the jobs that are available in the city are science and technology jobs, which many of them reside in that biotech sector. Interestingly enough, that's 18%, and like I said, 20% of our residents work in the city. You know, these numbers, it's interesting that they're real close to each other. And I would like to find a way to make sure that we have jobs, not just for those with master's degrees, but also for all the rest of our citizens. The, the more people that live in our city and work in our city, the better it is for them, the better it is for our economy, and the better it is for the environment.
Why do you think it's important for Gaithersburg residents to, to work in the city or for jobs in Gaithersburg to go to residence?
That's a good question. And it's really easy to assume that as long as there's a job available somewhere and that our residents are able to get to that job and work it, it all kind of works out. And in some respect, that's true. If you've ever had to travel an hour, an hour and a half to get to a job, then you understand how much that costs you. Especially if that job is a lower paying job, that, that cost is immense. You may have to work two jobs to earn enough to keep your family solid. That's really hard to do if, for at least one of those jobs, you're traveling for 45 minutes or an hour each direction. Not just that, people who are able to live where they work generally have more time to spend with their families and it costs them less because they're not spending all that money traveling. They have more money to spend. And we would love them to have that more of that extra money to spend. Hopefully they spend it in our city. It helps the economy. It helps their happiness and it helps the environment. Less commuting is less environmental impact.
I would like to know what tools the city council specifically has then to create that diverse array of jobs. As you know, there's sort of a carrot and a stick approach. There are always ways that you can incentivize businesses to, to create new jobs in the area, just the way that you could put, or try to put regulations to require businesses to hire more from in the area. What do you think the city council can do specifically to ensure that there are jobs in Gaithersburg for residents of Gaithersburg?
That's a good question, and I want to start off by saying that there is no easy and just quick fix. You know, this is an economic problem and those happen by, by the passage of time. And it takes time to fix them. You can't just put a bandaid on and suddenly everything is different. That said, there are a number of potential things that the city can do to influence the situation. I do also want to start by saying, none of these that I'm going to talk about right now are necessarily the right solution or even part of the right solution. The only way to get to that is to work very closely with our residents and our businesses and with our very smart people on the city staff like Tom Larrigan, who, who is, you know, economic development and knows pretty much everything. So some of the things that you can do is you can create new incentives to either incentivize businesses to hire local or to incentivize the creation of new businesses of different types, not just in the biotech sector. You also have an opportunity, I think, with Lake Forest. This is kind of a unique opportunity because once that is actually, once the redevelopment there actually starts, while it's not fully greenfielded, it is almost. And we're going to bring in new businesses and new residences and new jobs. And when we're bringing those in, which ones do we pull in? That's really the question. That's, that, that might be, not exactly, but almost a quick fix. Because we can bring in a new influx of jobs that address a wide range of skills, skilled labor, trade labor, all sorts of labor. Part of that is what we target with our marketing. We're, we're a biotech hub because we worked hard to be a biotech hub. And it's a self fulfilling cycle. We got some biotech companies to come, biotech workers come. So more biotech companies want to come because the workers are here. The education for, for those workers is already here. So when Lake Forest is being rebuilt, that presents a good opportunity for us to work hard to market to and bring in a diverse array of jobs that can attend to the diverse skills of our residents.
So what, what tools though, does the, the city council have to do that? I mean, it, it sounds like the, the redevelopment of, of Lake Forest Mall is going to be an opportunity for you all to, to put some new businesses in there where, where folks can get more jobs. But, but, but what role does the city council play in that? I mean, does the office of economic development, do you help make appointments to that? Do, how does that work specifically?
Surely, well, the, the staff doesn't really move in any direction without the direction of the council to do so. I've talked to a number of, a number of people on the city staff. And really the way it works is someone comes up with, with an idea, whether it's someone on the council or someone on staff. And the council needs to agree, even if it's just informally, that it might be something worth examining, it might be something worth moving forward before anyone puts in a significant amount of time or effort into looking into its feasibility. And, you know, once it's actually something that may be feasible, the city head council has to determine that it is a program that, that they want to fund and activate. So it all comes down to the will and the, the direction of the council for what the city staff is going to put their efforts into. So I talked about, you know, potentially marketing and working to bring these diverse types of jobs in. That would be at the direction and will of the council. Any sort of incentives that, that may be enacted, the exact same thing.
And would it require regulatory changes? Changes in, in zoning, for instance, in, in parts of Gaithersburg?
I, it may. You know, one of the things that is already in the works is the zoning for Lake Forest, which is right now purely commercial and through the master plan. And if you go to my website, we read quite a lot of my testimony on the master plan. But that master plan is likely going to rezone Lake Forest as mixed use development. In fact, in general, mixed use development is a great way to, to zone a lot of the city. It encourages the co-location of businesses and residences, which has a great success, especially with the live where you work paradigm.
I just want to follow that up with a couple of questions about the, the planning commission about the office of economic development. Is that, I, I assume the mayor makes appointments to that, but does the city council get to approve appointments to that? And if so, what are your priorities when determining whether or not you would vote to approve somebody for one or both of these committees?
That's a great question, Andrew. First of all, you had it absolutely right. The mayor makes appointments. Usually residents of the city write in and indicate that they're interested. And as part of that letter, they oftentimes lay out their qualifications that they think would help with whatever that, that position is. The, the mayor makes the appointments and the city council has to ratify and vote on those appointments. I would really be interested in people who have a history working with small businesses. The, like I mentioned, we already attract great biotechs. And I will note that a lot of our small businesses are also biotechs. So I guess in addition to small businesses, I'd like someone who, who has experience outside of the biotech area. And beyond that, you know, one of the most important factors for, I, I think, you know, any appointment to any committee is someone who's really interested, is really going to do the work. A lot of times, not a lot of times, sometimes you get people who join a committee and while they may have great qualifications, they don't sit down, roll up their sleeves and really do the work. And that's what you need is people who are really interested in helping the city.
Moving right along, what kinds of businesses specifically are you looking at attracting? Are these more within the biotech sector? You, you mentioned sort of a diversity of jobs. What, what kind of businesses would you like to put specifically in the, the Lake Forest Mall area?
Sure. In the biotech space, there, there, there is a realm of, part of the business is called biotech manufacturing. And I would love to attract some of that to Gaithersburg. Biotech manufacturing, you don't need a master's degree to be employed by that. It, it, it's very much kind of a trained skilled labor. And it pays well. Those are good jobs. I think it's important though, that we are not only a biotech city. You never know what's going to happen in the future of 20 years from now. Is biotech still going to be as strong as, as it is? I want to make sure that we are attracting jobs that are not just in one sector. Yeah, I mentioned trade labor or skilled labor before. There's a lot of skills nowadays that, that are different than, and trades nowadays that are different than what you might normally conceive of them. Montgomery College had a recent program, a special program to train people to be solar technicians. Once again, you know, this is, this is not a master's degree type job. But it's a really good job and it's a very modern job. I would like to attract businesses that provide services for, for the modern areas, whether it's, you know, green energy or trade labors where, where they provide services out to our residents and even some of the traditional ones, you know, the, the plumbers and the carpenters. And I don't know if, if it's possible to get, to get a shop in Lake Forest Mall for carpenters. But I do know that I've seen in Rockville, there's a really, really cool makerspace shop for woodworking. And having some of those types available, one of the great things about the Lake Forest site is after you put aside, the set aside for Greenland, there's about 85 acres of space. It doesn't all have to be retail and restaurants. There's a lot of opportunity there for all sorts of different jobs that could be available. And it doesn't have to be offices on top of those. Just because something's not on the first floor, doesn't mean it has to be an office.
To attract that diverse array of businesses, what do you think is the best tool in your arsenal? Is, do you subscribe to more of a philosophy of if you create the right conditions via zoning and via putting in the, the correct infrastructure in, in terms of housing and roads and transit and whatever? If you build it, they'll come? Or do you think that the city is going to need to use tax incentives to ensure that all of these different types of, of businesses come in?
I've never really liked the passive thought of if you build it, they'll come. You just put it out there and people show up. It sounds great. It seldom actually turns out that way. Or if they do come, they come very slowly and I'd like them to, to come faster. Tax incentives may be the way to go. I know I mentioned them earlier, but at the same time, I also mentioned, I don't know if that's the right thing. There's, so there, there, there's very smart people that work for the city that, you know, spend their lives researching these things. And I would lean heavily on them to help us understand the impact that a tax incentive may have. I think that there's more to building, to build it, to setting a condition that would attract these businesses than just building the right space and the right zoning for them. You have to think ahead in what types of education programs might help. I mentioned that one of the reasons that we have a great biotech sector is we have people that live in the city that have the right education now. So we get more biotech companies. I had also mentioned earlier, the, the Montgomery College program that was to train solar technicians. Think ensuring that we work with our local colleges, work with our local dot for profits that provide extra types of training and ensure that the training is available for the types of jobs that, that we want and that they're ready when a new employer comes in to help train people up for that would be very attractive. Then the other part of this is of course, marketing. Many years ago, I worked for a small business and we wanted to hire people and start, and, and start new service. And I did research and I found out there are all these programs to get money to train people. And we had no idea. There's lots of programs out there and a lot of people don't have any idea about them. Making sure that potential businesses that come in or that we want to come in know about those programs and are able and ready to take advantage of them is a very attractive thing.
Well, so, social infrastructure, as, as you mentioned, education being, you know, the primary example there is, is a type of infrastructure investment. It, it sort of fits within that school of if you build it, jobs will come because there will be workers there. So is that, is it fair to say that that's a key component of, of creating the atmosphere for, for more businesses to come here? Or, or do you think that we need to lean more into those incentives?
I think that incentives are a short-term solution and that we may very well want to use them in a short term to kickstart something. But your real long-term solution is always going to be the right infrastructure.
Moving right along, I'd like to ask about how you think the city of Gaithersburg can work together with Montgomery County to ensure that this kind of development is happening?
I think partnership with the county government is important for almost everything we do. Yes, we are a city and we have home rule, but we exist within the county. And there's a lot of things that the county does that affect us. And it's important to the, that we work with the county to make sure we have the best effect on Gaithersburg possible. And there's a lot of funding that the county provides for activities that, that we do. It's very important to have a good relationship with the county and work closely with them to ensure success in any of these activities. What I can tell you is if the city needs to build something to help make this more possible, we'll work with the county on funding for that. If new programs need to be put in place, a lot of those programs are going to have a positive effect on other parts of the county too. The county would happily work with us on those. And I want to note that the Lake Forest area and the Old Town area and a good bit of the east side of Gaithersburg exists in what's called a hub zone and an enterprise zone. These are things that, that came down from the state level, but the county has a lot of input on how they're designed. And when, and when they came in, the city worked with the county on and on making sure that they were applied to the right, right areas. And those zones affect Old Town mainly and the Lake Forest area mainly. It will have a large impact on making new businesses in that area and new residences in that area more financially attractive.
Wonderful. And a last question here. I was curious about, you, you mentioned early on that one of your key priorities is alleviating poverty. And that was one of the big reasons why you ran. What do you think economic development does to help alleviate poverty in Gaithersburg?
That's a wonderful question. It really is. And it's one of the core reasons that, that I'm running. I mentioned we have 9.4% poverty in Gaithersburg. Much of that resides on the east side of our city, by the way. There's a couple of things that you can do if you have a high poverty rate. The first one I'm going to say right off, I don't agree with doing. But you can bring new residents in that have higher income levels and in essence, push everyone else out. A lot of people recognize that as gentrification. I don't support that. And it's a slower road, but the one that I support is to help build your existing residents up. Yes, we have a 9.4% poverty rate, but it's not because our residents don't have skills. And it's not because our residents don't know trades. And it's not because our residents can't learn how to perform new jobs. If there are good jobs that pay well in our area and we are able to help our residents obtain those jobs, it will raise their economic levels up. That 9.4% poverty rate will reduce and it will help everyone in the city. From a, from, from taxes, as income levels go up, city revenues go up. And we can provide more services to our city, to having even better retail and restaurants and shopping experiences. Because the more income that an area makes, the more shops want to be there. It has a positive, positive effect on nearly everything and that's what I want to achieve.
Awesome. Thank you so much for joining us today, Dave. We really appreciate it.
It's really been my pleasure. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Philip Cook, for joining us today.
Thanks for having me, Andrew.
You said that you wanted to talk today about economic development in Gaithersburg, specifically in Old Town Town Center. Is that right?
Yeah.
So what is your vision for the Old Town Town Center?
So my vision for Old Town is, you know, a walkable community with thriving small businesses and just a place where, you know, people want to, want to come to, to hang out and, and, and go to.
And what do you think the city council can do to attract those kinds of businesses?
Yeah. So during the pandemic, there's been a few businesses that have closed in, in, in Old Town. And I think we definitely should, you know, do what we can to attract small businesses to, to the Old Town area. I think, you know, with the pandemic, especially with the, the Delta now, I think, you know, small businesses are, they want to be open, you know, to, to make money. And as a city and government, we want to keep people safe. And so we have to find that, you know, happy medium between people, keeping people safe and also wanting to support small businesses and, and keep them open. So just trying to find that, that medium and showing them, you know, what a, a good city Gaithersburg is and how we can support them as much as possible.
Sure. So it, it sounds like you think that one way to attract more businesses is to have a more lax COVID policy or, or to find some ways to encourage places to be open with regulations. Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, um, you know, we want to keep people safe. But I think we just need to be clear with them what the regulations are. I've, I've talked to a few small businesses and they've said they're confused between, you know, the city, the county, the state, you know, different, you know, things being said to them. So just being clear like what we need from them so that they can be open, I think is important.
And what other kinds of incentives do you think the city council should implement to get small businesses to attract them to Old Town Town Center?
Hopefully within the future, you know, we can have more mark train stations that would attract more people to come through Gaithersburg. That would be good for small businesses. You know, maybe we can lower their taxes. I don't know. That would be another.
Like tax incentives?
Yeah, for sure. And, um, yeah, I think those two things.
Do you think that infrastructure, infrastructure, both physical and, and social infrastructure play a role in, in creating a friendly business environment?
Yeah, definitely. Um, there's some newer apartment complexes in, in Gaithersburg, but there's still some kind of older ones that could use redevelopment as well. And if we had all kind of newer, nicer apartment buildings, that would definitely, I think, attract, you know, more businesses to the area.
Sure. Like in, in which areas? Is that around Old Town Town Center? Are you, are there specific apartment complexes you're referring to there?
Uh, yeah, um, can't think of the name of it, but there's one right next to the, the parking garage. That's a, a newer apartment complex in, in Old Town.
Do you think that it's going to be necessary for the Gaithersburg City Planning Board to change zoning regulations to put that kind of, you know, encourage that kind of redevelopment of, of apartment complexes or, or add another train station? Do you think changes in zoning are going to be necessary to that end?
I do. I think in order to get, um, you know, the redevelopment we want, I think zoning changes would probably be necessary. I know that's always kind of a, a fight between the businesses and the, um, people who live there. But I think in order to make the redevelopment happen, I think that would need to take place.
What kind of changes to zoning?
So, um, changing the residential ones to, um, you know, business ones, I think, would, um, probably need to, need to.
Mixed use?
Yeah, mixed use.
And would that be, in your mind, a substantive change from the 2005 master plan for the Old Town Town Center?
I mean, not too, uh, different. I think, you know, the, um, master plan was, is good. We just need to kind of take, take more steps forward to, um, implement it.
What kind of steps?
Um, so right now they're working on the, um, the new police station. So that, that should be nice.
You also mentioned that you wanted to talk about preserving some of the historical parts of Old Town Town Center. Which, are there specific buildings that you're referring to there or specific portions of, of the town center that you think are in danger of losing their historic sites? And what do you see as the city council's role in preserving those locations?
Yeah. So I think with Old Town, I think probably one of the most important things is keeping that Old Town feel. But at the same time, you know, you don't want to, um, knock down those, um, older, um, historical preservation buildings, like the museum where the, the train station museum is. And those old buildings right on, um, East Diamond Avenue.
I do love the Trade Museum. It's a very nice museum. And and just to sort of follow up on that one, how, what what kinds of ways can the city council or the city planning board, what what tools do they have to preserve those sites?
So the city council has a lot of tools to preserve those sites. I mean, they're in charge of any any business that wants to come in. Any development that happens has to go through the city council. So they're
Licensing.
Yeah, exactly. So.
So is the proposal then to not issue licenses to businesses that they feel would threaten the Old Town, sort of the consistency of the Old Town or would change the structure of the buildings?
Yeah, so if if they want a new business to come in, they want, they'd have to adapt to the Old Town field, you know, the business won't, you know, change Old Town, you know what I mean?
Gotcha, gotcha. Since the members of the planning board, the Gathersburg City Planning Board, who make all of the the zoning recommendations and and draw up these master plans, since all of those are nominated by the mayor, if you are on the city council, what would you look at for any candidate that he put forward to determine whether or not you would vote to approve that member of the planning board?
Oh, that's a good question. So I've actually talked to the mayor about joining a committee myself. I'm not on any committees. But one thing I've noticed, I've 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 never seen someone who's nominated who doesn't get elected to a a role on a on a board. So I mean, for for that instance, I mean, I would just ask them what their idea is of Old Town and what, you know, they are thinking before I would vote in favor of them. And just make sure that they have the same idea of redevelopment of Old Town as I do.
What do you think is the appropriate balance between redevelopment and preserving what is there? Because it it sounds like you want to strike some amount of of balance between those two things. What is that? What does that look like in your mind?
I'll give I'll give the example of, you know, Germantown and and Rockville. I don't think there's any place like like Old Town in either of those cities. But in in Frederick, I feel like they have a nice, similar Old Town as as we do here. But in Gathersburg, we do have the the Mark train, and that can attract more people. And I think what's important to me, at least, is keeping that Old Town feel and still having small businesses in in each each corner of the Old Town. Right now, there's still a lot of empty real estate, and I think having businesses filled still there is very important.
What kinds of businesses would you like to see filling the vacant office fronts or or business fronts in Old Town?
I think restaurants would would be would be good. I think that would be a great attraction for for people to to come out. Right now, there's La Casita, Don Jorge, a lot of restaurants I like to go to. So I think you can't go wrong with with restaurants.
Sure. And and any retail as well?
I mean, we could we could try. I don't know if that would work necessarily in in Old Town. But we could give it a try.
Jumping back to the master plan for a moment. The last time that a master plan was approved for Old Town Town Center was the one that you sent me before we started this conversation. This is the 2005 one. Do you think that anything has changed in Old Town that would fundamentally alter the vision of that plan? Or in other words, do you think that that plan should be updated in a meaningful way?
I think the plan is good. I think it's, I mean, it was done in 2005, so 16 years ago. But I think a lot of what they had there still applies. So I think it's still a good plan, and I would I would definitely agree with him.
Sure, not nothing, no updates on that?
No.
In the creation of master plans writ large for any part of the city of Gathersburg, what do you think the goals should be for when when the planning board is sitting down and and putting these together? Planning board members that, you know, presumably if you're on the city council, you will have voted to approve them or or reject them. What do you think that the aim of those master plans should be? You know, what what ways can they sort of foster businesses and promote equity and?
Yeah, I think I would think the most important thing would be, you know, job creation, you know, having more businesses come coming to the area. And I think that would be that would be great for for Old Town.
Do you think that Old Town is sufficiently walkable for the the residents and and shoppers who go there?
I I don't. I think, you know, if you look at like Rockville Town Center, that's like such a nice place to walk and you don't have to worry about cars. If if there's some way we could we can make it more like that, I would be much in favor of of that. I think that actually attracts more people to to come if, you know, it's, you can walk there and you don't you don't have to worry about kids, you know, cars and all that. And so, yeah.
So what can the city council then do to encourage greater walkability in Old Town Town Center?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to say close down East Diamond Road, but you know, it would it would take getting used to. If you just say it like that, people would get mad at you. But.
I mean, that is that is sort of what they've done in parts of of Rockville anyways, is they've shut down some of the streets. You know, granted, the the street on which Rockville Town Center is is different from East Diamond Avenue. But if not shutting down the roads or temporarily shutting down the roads, what what other ways can the city council create a more walkable environment?
Yeah, I think shutting down the roads would probably be the only way to go there. You know, maybe we could we could try it for, you know, a few days and just see how it goes and then, you know, go from there, you know?
Sure, like under the streetery program that the county implemented?
Right.
Thank you for all of your answers there. Is there anything else that you think is important that you'd like the voters of Gathersburg to know about your campaign for for city council?
Yeah, so along with redevelopment, Old Town, environment's very important to me. Gathersburg is a tree city, so I feel like we should be conserving as many trees and and green areas as we can. If you want to learn more about me, my website's www.votphilipcook.org. That's with one L.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Philip. I really appreciate it. Good afternoon, Lisa Henderson. Thank you so much for joining us on the I Hate Politics podcast.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you for having me.
My pleasure. So you said prior to this that you wanted to talk about housing today. So I was wondering if you could just start us off by telling a little bit about what your vision is for housing policy in Gathersburg?
Sure. Well, well, I don't think that it will come as a surprise to say that the population growth in Gathersburg is targeted to exceed not just the amount of available housing, but the amount of affordable housing and the amount of senior affordable housing. Because according to the Maryland Planning Data, the 55 and older demographic will increase in both Montgomery County and Gathersburg at about 8% per annum, which is great news. We we want people to choose Gathersburg as their home. But as the population continues to switch from variable income to a fixed income, the problem we will face is the availability of affordable senior housing and affordable housing in general. I have absolutely no doubts that the city is the city council and the mayor is committed to addressing this issue. And I want to be part of that work. I want to be part of the work to to help bring affordable housing into the city to match the growth of population that that is trending. So a pivotal issue for me that prompted my candidacy, actually, was the Holiday Inn redevelopment project. And the unfortunate vote that occurred to to make a to make the 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 plant, the zoning more clear for residential versus commercial unfortunately triggered a loss of about 160 affordable dwellings for seniors. So there there's no magic bullet to this, to resolving this impending issue. If there were one that I could waive, I'd waive it all day long. But with the current average age of Gathersburg residents in their 30s and and those people are choosing to stay and retire in Gathersburg, which is, again, is great news. I I want to be a part of of the resolution to that issue, whether it's a mixture of of economic growth or job training or or even the difficult task of talking about zoning and and the right mix of zoning parameters and what makes the most sense. So I I want to be a part of that journey and part of that resolution. And I believe with my history, I'm qualified to participate and help the city get there.
I'll start specific and then sort of get broad there. You specifically mentioned senior housing a couple of times. What tools do you think the city council has to incentivize the creation of more senior housing? And does that involve in your mind engaging with the municipal planning board? Or is that are those tools that exist within the toolbox of the city council itself? How do you think the the council can go about addressing that?
It's a zoning conversation. So when we look at residential use, mixed mixed use dwelling, commercial use, what's what's the mix to allow? We'll take the Holiday Inn example. The change was made because it's in a commercial zone and it was target for residential use. The way that the language read, it would have allowed that to occur. So it it was a simple textual fix that that unfortunate, that the unfortunate loss of housing happened. What is that? Can we go back and look at that zoning? And is there a path to allowing residential senior housing in commercial areas where maybe there's vacant property? Because now we've got a hotel and that location that's vacant.
So your thought is is changing some places where it is designated for commercial use to to mixed use or to residential use?
For residential use.
Gotcha. Okay. Now, sort of building on that, what can be done to address the affordability aspect of that? Because I know part of that is just sort of the the limited supply of housing. But there are also a variety of other factors that are sort of driving up the cost of of housing. What do you think that the city council can do to address that affordability part of the issue?
Sure. And 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 economic, and I think the city's doing it. So economic growth, I think, is a big part of it. And as we become, and I'm going to call Gathersburg a new biotech hub. And as we we invite these, the biotech companies in, do the Gathersburg residents have the skill sets to to gather jobs in those companies as they open big headquarters and and large, you know, corporations and private industry? Is there an opportunity to do some drop job training within our residents so they can achieve the jobs within those companies, particularly as we continue to see biotech firms come through? So I think it's a mixture. The economic growth is, hey, 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 absolutely, we want that to happen. But are our residents still commuting outside of the city to get jobs? Because the the skill set doesn't match the growth that we're bringing in.
And yeah, the the definitely the growth in the biotech sector is is has been extraordinary in Gathersburg over the last decade. But you also do have a very vibrant retail sector. And I know that there are a lot of folks in in the municipality who are working in the service sector in one way or another.
Absolutely.
What can be done to keep them in their homes and to allow them, you know, to, if they're living outside of of Gathersburg, to be able to afford to live therein?
Again, increase it, a minimum wage increase. Increase the number of of retail within the within the city. If if I live in on the east side of Gathersburg and I'm commuting outside of the city or on other in other parts of the city so that I can get a great retail job, can we bring those that retail to where the part of the city that is most in need? And that's a conversation with with the economic growth team to make sure that happens.
So sort of changing direction briefly for a moment. A lot of the zoning elements that you talked about go through the city planning board. And it's my understanding that the mayor makes nominations to the planning board and the city council votes whether or not to approve those nominations. When considering a nomination by the mayor for someone to sit on the planning board, what will be your priorities in reviewing whether or not someone is is worthy of a yes or no vote?
That's a a great question. Thank you. A background and history of where they participated in planning before. There are places throughout the country that have have done this work. Will we be able to attract? Hopefully, we will attract folks from those sectors who can bring that skill set to the city. That would be very attractive to me.
Sort of moving back to specifically housing for a moment. One of the major challenges that the county is facing with the population growth is the number of folks who are unable to afford a home, but they are still sort of working in in the community. So you have a lot of people who are unhoused or or experiencing homelessness. Do you see housing policy as a vehicle to help get these these people who are experiencing homelessness into homes? And and what can you do as a city council member to get folks down that path?
We would look at homelessness holistically. It's it's not just about housing. It's about health. It's about mental health. There are other factors to homelessness besides a place to to dwell and lay your head. So I think it's a holistic approach to making sure that an individual has all of the the amenities that they need to be in a home, to maintain a home and to make sure that that's the right answer. But but it is the it is the the whole holistic approach to looking at all factors of homelessness. I'm a I'm a PK. I'm the daughter of a preacher. So I understand this issue intimately. And it's not just providing a home. It is providing that that whole solution. And and the city, it is something that the city and and the partners with the city are are doing a fantastic job with every day. But that's how you meet that challenge.
Another piece to the puzzle is the city of Gathersburg has a variety of programs that are designed at helping folks afford to to purchase homes in the area, because, as was mentioned, the cost of housing is going up, and fix a number of of units into affordability permanently via the Gathersburg Home Buyer Assistance Loan Program, the Community Development Block Grant Program, the moderately priced dwelling unit program. Do you think that any of these programs, granted, the MPDU program is administered by the county, and do you think any of these programs should be expanded or changed in in terms of their eligibility? How can the city council best use the tools that they have to ensure that folks can afford to move in immediately?
Three words: education, education, and education. It's it's complicated. Those documents are complicated. The 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 applications are complicated. Who the eligibility requirements are complicated. We all, as a as a community, as a people of this world, need to do a better job of educating those who are in great need of how to achieve the needs. There there there's there's, I've looked at these documents, I, you know, and I've talked to people about where they need to go and who they need to talk to. And even in these conversations, I'm exhausted. So, you know, imagine the person who's who's, you know, dealing with with raising children and working several jobs and and trying to get to that answer. So we, I don't know that we we make the work easier So we've, I don't know that we we make the work easier in terms of documents, because, you know, there are things that we need to provide legally and the documents have to say certain things. But we must do a better job of educating so that people can get there easier. And I and and how much can we put online digital versus folks filling out paper by hand, you know, signing, bring in paper because I gotta sign it?
How would that kind of an educational program work? Is that something that you think the the city can do, sort of like a marketing campaign? Do you think that there are, you know, maybe social workers or or agents of the the city council that can go out and sort of speak to people in need? How would that work on a ground level?
Yes to all of that. So two things, Zoom has become prevalent. Well, you know, one thing we we got out of COVID, besides all the badness, was the ability to to, I can attend more meetings now that that I couldn't because the time to drive between them was too much because of Zoom. So there's there's that availability and we get more uh people to attend. But then we, there's got to be boots on the ground as well. So community centers, town meetings, invite the public and go to a most apartment dwellings have clubhouses or community houses. Meet the people where they are and and have these conversations at the right place at the right time.
Just in terms of of, you know, the macroeconomics of of housing, uh, do you think that the city is in need of more housing of a specific type? Or just more housing in general? Uh, how how do you see the city as, you know, expanding on its its housing stock?
Right. Uh, I think, so let's take the Lake Forest project, redevelopment project, for example. I I am in favor of uh, the city will legally meet its requirement for affordable housing, and I believe it's fifteen percent. But market rate housing as well. But there also needs to be a path to homeownership. That's the path to to better income, to better wealth. Home, we, you know, we learn that a lot when when we're small. That's the path to to better wealth. And we we should set that path. We should set a path in place where a person who's maybe renting an apartment, paying monthly rent, how did they achieve job training, economic growth, so that they can then as part of an M D P U assignment, gain homeownership? So I don't I don't know that the that the issue is necessarily specific with the Lake Forest Redevelopment Project. Market rate versus affordable housing, it is, where's the path to homeownership? And 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 that's something I want to focus on.
Yeah, I I certainly like that framing, the the path to homeownership uh is a a very important way of sort of looking at that issue, because I know a lot of folks are are just trying to figure out what their path to homeownership is.
Absolutely.
And and you sort of you dived into my follow up there. I was gonna ask about Lake Forest uh specifically, so so thank you for touching on that. Uh, I do want to follow up on the infrastructure side of it. Because uh with the increase in residents and it's a it's a pretty, if you're if Gathersburg continues to increase in size uh at the rate that it's increased over the last decade, there will be a lot more people in Gathersburg by twenty thirty. What do you think the city needs to do to accommodate the people who are moving in?
I I I'd like the amount of of walking space, particularly with the Lake Forest project that that's available in the city. It's one of, any anytime I meet people as I'm out and about and I and I ask the question, what do you love about Gathersburg? It's always the parks and the the walkable communities. It's it's always the answer. And I think as as we continue to develop the communities that that have those amenities, we will continue to be an attractive place to live.
Uh, do you think that there will be other tools that the the city can use to ensure that these kinds of infrastructure investments are made? Various types of incentives or or requirements, you know, it's sort of a a carrot and stick approach
Right.
on the developers?
So I'm a I'm a self-professed data junkie, so I I I deal with large amounts of data at work every day and and it's it's easy to give an answer because I think that's what should happen. But it's a whole different answer when I dive into the data and see what the real answer is. And it is imperative. And I think the best tool that we're gonna have is data analytics tools. The data's there. The data exists, exists. But the tools to go in and analyze the data and even to learn as city council people to learn ourselves how to analyze the data, what it means, because there is an art art to that to to analyzing data. And I think it would be a great, a great opportunity to learn, learn that within the city.
Uh, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you joining us today. Uh, and I do want to provide an opportunity if you have any last comments that you'd like to make.
I want to say thank you for having me. I really appreciate talking to you. Thank you for for the questions, the meaningful questions. I really appreciate it. And the last thing I want to say is vote for Lisa Henderson for Gathersburg City Council.
Alrighty, thank you so much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jamil Hernandez. Thank you so much for joining us on the I Hate Politics podcast.
Hey, Andrew. Pleasure being here.
Alrighty, uh, so just to jump right into it, you said that you wanted to talk today about sustainability in Gathersburg. Can you tell us a little bit about what your vision is uh for sustainability in the the municipality?
Yeah, no, thank you for asking and thank you for having me on the pod. Um, so I think from a municipal standpoint, there are two main buckets that I would put sustainability efforts or conservation efforts can be assigned. One is that intake, meaning how the city procures things, energy, fleets, lights, solar, stormwater, right? You know, like how it spends its money in getting things. It can be green, like made more green, made more sustainable, right? And the other bucket or category is how the city uh delivers services, right? Uh, recycling, compost, landscaping, weed control, right? So the things it gives out or does into the community are to and you can carve these up many different ways. In my mind, that's how I kind of separate them. And I look at our experience here. I'm the current chair of the Kemptland HOA, right? The Citizens Assembly, the K C S, we call it. And Kemptland's a very environmentally sustainability-focused community, right? Our clubhouse is heated and cooled by geothermal energy, right? We adopted non-synthetic uh or banned the use of synthetic pesticides well before it was a mandate, right? Um, we recycle, we look for ways, you know, for for creative stormwater management uh issues. And we recently, during my tenure, we had a resident come in with the idea for composting, right? Community composting. And I have never composted before, right? So I always start composting with something people in the Pacific Northwest or farmers did, right? And, you know, this this resident was very sharp and I, you know, I like to dig in and dig deep, right? So I started learning a lot. And okay, how do we pay for this? How does it work? What's the impact? What it can do? And so I learned, okay, we can do a lot of good work. Um, but one of the 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 things that I've always realized is the original plan was to have a community composting uh center right by the clubhouse, right? Where people could bring for free their composting uh material. And, you know, that was very easy to approve, right? Very easy to do. But as you think through it more, you realize you really got to meet people where they are, right? And a lot, you know, a significant percentage of our residents are not gonna schlep their composting bin down to the clubhouse. So if we really want to make an impact, uh, you know, I championed and we've got approved a hybrid system where we have a community composting location, but we also have curbside uh composting, right? So anybody in the Kemptlands can avail themselves to weekly compost pickups. Uh, and and it's at a subsidized, reduced rate, right? We have some there. So you have your choices, right? For the people who want to take it, they can. And for people like me, I like convenience, right? And they come and pick it up every Wednesday. And so I think when you think about adopting more sustainability uh practices or services at our municipal level, you got to keep that in mind, that, you know, the city currently has one drop-off composting location. They've just added a second one at the K C Community Center, which is great, right? The more the merrier, but it's not enough, right, to make a big difference. We've done, you know, the little neighborhood here of the Kemptlands, we've taken out close to over thirty thousand pounds of waste that would have gone into landfills. This is just year to date. Is now, you know, turned into usable compost, right? Uh, and part of the deal by giving your compost, you know, you get back uh guarding soil, you know, as part of the the arrangement. Um, and you learn a lot. So meeting people where they are, making things convenient and easy is very important, right? In my private life, I work, I'm an entrepreneur. We founded a life sciences company. We uh sell products to people that get delivered to their house. You learn very quickly, you know, consumer sentiment, consumer choice is very big in the U S. So if you can meet consumer, you know, demands and choice, you can get a lot accomplished. And I think sometimes government services don't always, you know, keep that in mind and I'm going on a little rant, so give me some some rope to try to explain where I'm going. So sometimes entrepreneurs make the mistake, or business people make the mistake of thinking, hey, I'm gonna go into government and I'm gonna run the government like a business, right? That I think is a mistake, because a government is not a business, is not in a profit-seeking mode. It serves a a a different purpose. But that doesn't mean that there aren't good, sound management principles, keeping the customer first, meeting the customer where they are, right? That can be taken from the private sector into the public sector. And so not a sustainability, but sort of in that same range. You look at, you know, there's, the city has a dog park. You go there and it had, you know, weeds growing. There was a tree branch sticking out. It's kind of like a gravel top that had been eroded. So I took pictures, I put it together, I sent an email to the Public Works Department and the city is fantastic at responding and they fixed it, right? So yay, that's great. However, you have to know which email to use. You know, go through the process of taking that. There are no signs in the dog park that say, hey, if you see something here that doesn't make sense, here's a Q R code or here's our email address, right? Let us know. That's what I mean about meeting people where they are. So great that the city's adding a second composting location, but I think we could do better, right? In terms of can we expand the curbside delivery? Well, how do you fund it? What's the right mechanism to do it? Uh, this is important, because it's not just about, okay, we're gonna do all these services and, you know, never figure out how to pay for them. Um, so those are kind of like my philosophy on government services. You know, you got meet people where they are, making simple, uh, well-explained, uh, accessible uh and usable by the by the residents. So I hope I answered your question.
I I think the obvious follow-up question there is sort of what you posed yourself, and that is how do you pay for that? How how does the city expand uh its compost system, if we're sort of being specific, but even more broadly, uh, its various conservation and sustainability efforts?
So I got three ideas and then another thing I've learned early in life is you cannot be the only font of suggestions and idea, right? As a as an active representative, what you should be is the conduit or the lightning rod to bring more solutions and ideas and make sure they get a fair airing uh by uh the different folks to see what can happen. Because if you're only gonna depend on me or on you, or that's not enough, right? This composting idea came from a resident, right? And then, but then the idea is not enough, right? Then you need to fund it and run a town hall and get feedback and improve it and find, you know, the different pieces that are missing to put it together. So how to fund sustainability efforts in the city? Well, first, city's about a little over seventy thousand residents now, right? The census just came out and adjusted for July, I think it's over seventy thousand. Annual budget is about seventy million dollars plus minus. So I've, I don't know who to credit for this quote, because it's not mine, so I'll I'll look it up to see who it is, but it might be Cory Booker, but um, check me on that. And it says, like, budgets are a reflection of and an indication of our values, right? And what do we prioritize, right? So when we talk about how to pay for it, the first thing you do is have we prioritize our spending to be in line with our values, right? So are we spending more on other things that maybe are not as in tune with our value system? The second way to pay for it, I mean, there's the logical ones, right? Do you raise taxes or cut other services? Reprioritize? Another, I think, creative way is there, you know, as somebody who works in life sciences and looks for grants and research money, right, for different opportunities, there are state, federal, nonprofit, corporate grants to be had for sustainability efforts, right? But in order to receive that money, it's important to look for it, apply for it in a systematic, comprehensive and recurring basis. So the city has and does apply to grants from time to time. But as I understand, there's not, you know, there's not like a full F T E or two F T Es whose whole mission in life is to scour every private foundation, right? Every federal, uh, you know, uh, grant, uh, contracting vehicle that's out there, everything from the state of Maryland, from the county, right? Uh, that could be used to fund different uh initiatives. That, I've learned in private practice, is a bit of a learned skill and an art, right? To keep the dashboard and radar of when the timelines are for these recurring grants or know when new grants are coming. We just talked a little bit about dog parks, right? So, you know, the different corporate, you know, dog food companies are always putting out unrestricted money to maintain, upgrade or improve dog parks. Let's apply, I mean, like, once you make your, once you create the system, submitting grants, right? Becomes more streamlined and I would submit every year, right? It, I don't think it would take too long, if properly systematized and organized, to get a return on that investment for that F T E, uh, full-time equivalent or employee in the city to do this work. Um, I've seen it work in the private sector and I've seen it fail when it was an ad hoc or a part-time person or a consultant brought in for a short period of time to try to apply for a few grants. No, no, the granting system needs to be institutionalized to try to look for all those monies that are available. And then there's all kinds of minutia, which I'm happy to get into, where maybe the city entity is not a qualifying entity for the grant. So it needs a captive five oh one C three nonprofit or a partner entity that it can apply and, right? There's all these little things that you got to think through and work out. Who is the one actually applying for the grant? None of the grants will cover a hundred percent of the project that you're thinking, but maybe they'll cover some of it. So how do you come up with the other money? The beauty thing about grants is sometimes you can get matching grants, right? If you get money from one, you can match uh with the other. Uh, so that's a long, another long way uh to answer your question of how do you pay for it? So it's looking for grants, prioritizing your budget to align with your values, looking for other places to cost. And the last one, obviously, tax increases, but I'm loathe to look at that before I've exhausted the other ones first.
Just to sort of go back a little bit to your your two buckets that you talked about, the the
Incoming and outgoing.
The, one of the big ones, I think, for a lot of places is uh energy use. How can the city of Gathersburg get more of its energy from renewable sources?
So great question, right? So there's a few ways, and I can tell you some of the ways we've applied it in the private sector in the company I co-founded. So we have a office space, right? And you can pay your electric bill from Pepco. But you can also look for who's, you know, Pepco does supply of energy. They also do the, you know, the um delivery or or the infrastructure. And now, the way the laws have changed, you can separate the two, right? So you can make sure that the energy that's being supplied was sourced from clean sources. So we, there's several companies that do it, that do this. But the one we choose, we chose at work and for my house, uh, it's called Clean Choice Energy. And so you can buy into them through Pepco, right? So Pepco's still your utility company, but your energy generation is coming through Clean Choice, which is either one hundred percent solar or one hundred percent solar and wind, both being uh different versions of clean energy. It's a little more expensive, right, than the Pepco straight supply? But again, you can check my quote on this, but I believe Pepco straight delivery of but I believe Pepco straight delivery of energy is sixty percent still from like coal and unclean uh, are not eco-friendly uh, locations, uh, sources. So this you can make it, I think it's about sixty percent. Um, so you can make this now a hundred percent from clean renewable sources of energy and you're paying that premium. So, okay, that may cost this, so that's one way this, so long way to answer your question. How can the city pay, uh, get clean energy? How it procures, right? The other are their rooftop solar in all the city buildings, right? In terms of how it does it. Uh, and in the, like Department of Works, all the parking lots. You saw how Montgomery County in their police and government services here in the Lakelands, right? They covered a lot, a, a large percentage of their parking lot with a solar uh, system, right? So now they're, it's a great, I mean, I think solar and parking is a great combination because the, you know, the locations are mostly, you know, um, unused. It, it provides a dual service. You get shaded parking spots and you get to generate clean energy, right? So when there's snow or rain or that, so there are good mix. I should look at it and I don't have it handy, how much electricity is being generated by that, that parking lot there, right? So what are the opportunities for the city within all its owned infrastructure uh, to do that? So those are a few examples to, to your question.
Right, so you mentioned that a lot of this is under the, the purview of uh, state regulation and, and county regulation. So how can the city, in your opinion, better work with the, the state and the county to ensure that their licensing uh, process and their regulations are more uh, befitting to getting these kinds of, you know, developments in, in a, in a more timely manner?
So the first thing is, when I started on the composting project, I knew nothing about composting, right? So the first thing you gotta do is you gotta do it yourself, right? So how many solar installations, how many E V installations? How many sustainability projects where the city itself has to go through that process? Are we, are we um, championing, are we trying to do? Cause the more of them you do, the more of expertise you build to understand what a complicated mess this is and how it should be improved, right? I learned in composting that not all green bags that say compostable are really compostable. You gotta look for the special seal, right? And know all the minutia uh, there to get better at it, to then educate other folks and how to make it simple for them and how you get a, you gotta get a bucket that seals in nicely. So there's no smells, right? And demystify it. So I only learned that because I had to do a composting project, right? And so one way the city can help, can learn or be an advocate for more sustainability installations is it itself acquire more sustainability, you know? So is there rooftop solar projects that can be deployed throughout the city, right? More E V out there in every, in every city parking lot, other E V uh, chargers that can be installed and going through that process and understanding, wow, this is pretty complicated. How do we simplify this for homeowners? H O A, our H O A is going through the process of trying to install an E V charging station, right? How do we maximize the simplicity of this throughout our, our municipality? And then, look, the city takes positions on um, policy issues on Annapolis every year. They write letters, they go give testimony, right? The council members give testimony or sent, you know, depending who is the right person to sit, to send. So this is an area where we can lead by example and show where, hey, here's how we've done it. Here's what we think can improve and here's how we suggested and press on. So those are the, the different ways I would answer.
Great, well, thank you so much for joining us today, Yamil. Uh, is there any information that you'd like to, to let our audience know before the end of this interview?
Uh, well, first, thank you for having me on again. Uh, my name is Jamil Hernandez. I'm running for the city of Gathersburg City Council. Uh, I hope you take an opportunity, look at our website, votejamil.com. And thank you again, Andrew, for this opportunity.
All right, thank you so much. Have a nice evening. Good afternoon, Jim McNulty. Thank you so much for joining us on the I Hate Politics podcast today. How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks for having me.
My pleasure. You said you wanted to talk about economic development in Gathersburg, particularly with relation to Old Town Town Center and Lake Forest Mall. Uh, can you tell me what your vision is for those two sites?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, first of all, Lake Forest, we had a big development here in August uh, with the passing of the new master plan. So uh, obviously that is just a guideline, you know? Master plan shows what vision uh, the city would like to have, but you know, that's not an actual proposal. You know, the, the challenge with Lake Forest over the years has been that there are five different owners. Uh, each of them owns, you know, like there's one owner of the mall and the parking lot that surrounds those parts. And then each of the anchor stores. And there are reciprocal uh, easements on each of their deeds, which means all five of the owners either have to consolidate or be in agreement for any kind of redevelopment. And that's what has been the challenge over the years. So now that the city has, you know, put forward a new master plan, it's my hope uh, that the owners can come together and either, like I said, consolidate um, or at least come to an agreement that yes, they want to move forward and start putting together a development plan. We have a unique opportunity here with Lake Forest and we have to make sure that we get it right. We have, you know, a hundred and two acres at the intersection of, you know, three fifty five and one twenty four. Uh, it's a prime location and we need to put something there that actually is a destination. You know, one of my worries is we can't just make it another generic town center. Um, we want to make sure that whatever goes in there has a unique draw so that we're not, you know, limiting the uh, opportunities for our other job centers like on the Kentlands or Rio or Crown or Old Town. We want to make sure that everybody that's going there is continuing to go there. And then we add something new and unique at Lake Forest. So whether that is a convention center or a park or, you know, something that people will come to that and then support maybe the restaurants around that and then do the shops around that. So, you know, I'm really hoping that the owners see the opportunity for what it is uh, and put forward a plan uh, that the city can, can move forward on. It's also one of the reasons that I'm, I'm running is I'm the only candidate from the east side of Gathersburg. Uh, so I live near the mall and I live near Old Town. So I have a unique perspective that I can bring to this process once a development proposal comes forward.
I'll follow up on the, the specifics of that for a moment. Uh, but first, I want to ask, you mentioned a convention center is a possible uh, thing that could be placed there? Something that is a destination, but doesn't compete with the other destinations of Gathersburg? It doesn't sound like your vision includes housing or a park or schools. Some of the other things that have been talked about uh, as potential uh, opportunities for the Lake Forest Mall site, uh, am I, am I understanding that correctly?
No, actually, that's just one of the pieces that I think is important. And the new master plan calls for up to sixteen hundred residential units. And particular focus is what's called the missing middle, um, some more affordable housing. Uh, and I'm certainly for, you know, adding additional housing. We certainly have a, a housing shortage. Um, one of my concerns is, you know, the east side of Gathersburg is already the most dense side of the city. So we need to make sure that whatever we put in there, that we're looking holistically and we're looking at the infrastructure. So what are we doing with the transit? What are we doing with the roads? I mean, anybody who's been stuck on three fifty five pre pandemic uh, at rush hour at Montgomery Village knows that it backs up already. Um, so we need to work with our partners at the state and the county to make sure as we're moving forward with any development, that we're really taking a holistic look at the uh, at the infrastructure that goes there. Not only that, but the schools, you know, the, the closest elementary school to where Lake Forest is is South Lake Elementary and it's currently thirty five percent over capacity. So it would only take about a hundred and thirty five, a hundred and fifty additional students to actually preclude any development in that space until another school was built. Uh, so it is going to be incredibly important to look at, at the holistic um, opportunities there. Uh, when I talk about a convention center or a park or something like that, uh, the master plan does call for thirty five percent of the property being used as public space. And I am all in favor of that. And that's where I'm saying with that thirty five percent, it needs to be a unique draw. What I would love to see is all of that percentage aggregated into a common space versus having, you know, pocket parks here and there. Uh, not that those won't be important, but I think when you have such a, a rare opportunity to create a grand space, uh, think of something like a Boston Common. I mean, that's obviously a much larger piece. But if we can, if we can create something that is a destination and that people want to spend time there, particularly if there is an event going on at whatever that public thing is, then it increases, you know, the length of time that people are spending there. So it increases the amount of money they might be spending at restaurants or shopping at stores and, and supporting our economy. Um, so I'm just incredibly excited about the, the future of Lake Forest. But now that, you know, the, that step of getting the master plan approved, now we really need uh, to get the owners to step up and put something together that is within that vision of what can happen there at Lake Forest.
Yeah, that's, that's an important point and I, I do want to touch on that for a second. Uh, first, it, it does seem like you agree at least somewhat with the vision of the current master plan that was, that was recently approved for the Lake Forest Mall site. Uh, so you, you accept that, that uh, general vision of what will go in at the site?
I do, I mean, I think, I think that it, the, all of the work that the city staff put in, putting together that master plan um, was phenomenal. I had the opportunity as the chair of the Old Town Advisory Committee to chair one of the focus groups. And we had a number of, of city committees, um, that are all, you know, volunteers. And uh, city staff went through different, you know, a lot of questions and sought input. And I was pleased to see a number of the uh, topics that were discussed in our focus group reflected in the master plan. Um, but again, it's only a, a guideline. And I think, you know, it will be important to have somebody who lives nearby that can reflect the voice of the people who already lived there and understand the concerns of those residents and can be able to communicate in both directions, be able to communicate the concerns uh, to uh, the city council from the residents and then vice versa. As um, a plan is proposed, being able to come back and having that dialogue with the, the community.
Gotcha, so I want to talk next steps. It seems like now that it is, now that the master plan has been approved, it's mostly out of the hands of the county or the, the city council. Uh, what do you think you could do or the city council could do, uh, if anything, to try and facilitate the, the landowners on each, on each of the parcels on like the Lake Forest Mall site? To get them to come together and reach some kind of consensus? Or is it totally, you know, beyond your reach?
You know, I think this is a, a situation where it's important to be able to bring people together. Um, you know, the city cannot impose their will and say, this is exactly what you're going to do. But I do think that they have the opportunity to kind of facilitate conversations. Um, you know, there, Lake Forest continuing to sit mostly vacant is in nobody's interest. It's not the city's interest, it's not in our residents' interest and it's not in the owner's interest. Um, obviously, you know, some of the anchor stores have kind of larger um, you know, macro economical issues that they're dealing with, with bankruptcies and, and other issues. So this one particular property may be not, you know, high on their priority list. Um, and that's where I think the city uh, can come in and say, well, why don't we have a conversation? And get all the different stakeholders at the table and say, what, what do you need to be able to move forward? Um, is it just a function of, well, they're just not coming up to the price that we want to get purchased? Or is it, no, we really do think that we have a future in this space and we want to be a part of it. Uh, those are two very different conversations. Um, but you can't start coming up with solutions unless you start identifying what challenges are. Um, so I think now that the master plan is in place, I think those are the conversations that need to start happening if they aren't already. Uh, I know our city's economic development team uh, does a really nice job of, of being proactive. You know, there's a growgathersburg.com website that touts all the wonderful uh, opportunities that exist here in the city and the different programs that are there. I mean, Lake Forest is a part of the uh, the Old Town uh, Enterprise Zone and the opportunities there. So there's already uh, incentives for people to come in and develop in both uh, Lake Forest and in Old Town. Uh, so it's, it's again, having those conversations and then figuring out, well, how do we start fast tracking this? You know, what are the obstacles? And let's start addressing each of those obstacles versus kind of saying, oh, it's too hard, we can't do it. Well, let's start with, what is the first obstacle that we can overcome? Let's get a victory, let's move on to the next one.
In your mind, does that include uh, different kinds of uh, incentives that the city could make? Or, or changes to regulations? Or is this not something you can sort of discern at this point?
Well, the master plan was, was, you know, I think the first step with zoning, right? And figuring out, well, we definitely want mixed use here. And this is the, the different scale of, of, of residential. And here's the kind of, you know, we don't want a giant big box store with a huge, you know, surface parking lot. We want, you know, uh, structured parking and, and, you know, it can't be above this size. So those are the kinds of things that, you know, the, the owners can now talk to their architects, their planners and say, what is our vision? And how does this mesh what was put in place? Um, so that, that is one thing.
Do you have a sense of, of how long this could take, like a, a timeline, just broadly?
Nobody's going to like the answer to this. Um, it, it's going to take years. I mean, you're not going to see a completed space possibly for ten or more years, maybe, maybe longer. But that doesn't mean that you can't have incremental change. Um, you know, particularly if it's identified what the public space could be, where that public scape space is going to be. Um, while some of those other things are being discussed, developed, designed, et cetera. But it really does come down to looking at that overall vision and then deciding that, you know, they want to be a part of that solution. And I think for the longest time, it's just been, we've just been stuck. You know, even when, you know, W R S bought the mall proper in two thousand nineteen. Um, and the city said, well, we want to look at the master plan. And they said, well, we just bought this, we'd like the chance to buy the anchor stores. So the city did give them, I think it was another six months before they put on that moratorium. Uh, and they just weren't able to, to get there. So, you know, they've been trying and then we had the pause. So now that we have the master plan, you know, we need to kickstart this conversation.
You, so you mentioned the Economic Development Office. I know that the uh, the Gathersburg City Planning Board plays a role in this. Um, it's my understanding that the mayor makes appointments to those and the city council approves or rejects his uh, recommendations. What would your standards be when deciding whether or not to approve a nomination to one of these departments by the mayor?
So which departments again, you're talking about the Planning Commission and which one?
Yeah, planning, uh, mostly the Planning Commission. I, I, I don't know if the, the city council has oversight over the Economic Development Board.
Sure, so let's take a step back because there's two, there are two different types of entities. The, the Planning Commission, you know, makes its recommendations to the city and the city will approve and, and that's, that has a little more, um, I guess regulatory um, authority than the Economic Development Committee. That's more of a um, an advisory, like Old Town Advisory Committee is a part of the Economic Development Committee. You know, we don't, people don't have to apply to us and then apply to the city. If you're putting plans into the city, that has to go before the planning board. They have to approve it and then the city approves that. Uh, so the two very different types of organizations. Um, but with regard to the Planning Commission, you know, we've had people who've been on there for a long time and are very good at what they do. In fact, John Schlichting, who's the head of the uh, Planning for the City, used to be a city council member. So he's um, uh, very, and John Bauer has been on the, the commission for goodness, I think a couple of decades as well. Um, so when there's opportunities to put people on those committees, you really want someone who has an understanding of land use. You have an understanding of, of housing policy, um, you know, and economic development. You know, none of these things happen in silos. Um, and it's funny, you know, looking back even at the uh, the Old Town Master Plan, which was written back in two thousand and five and it talks about market conditions. Of course, the market conditions now have changed tremendously since that was written, you know? So you need people that can kind of, you know, adapt with the times and understand um, the needs of the city. And, and that's the, the, the role of anybody who's elected to uh, city council or the mayor. You know, it's about competing priorities and, and, you know, even through this master plan process with uh, Lake Forest, you know, you have the owners and they have their vested interest in their property. And then you have the city who's looking at what that space means to the city as a whole. And I know there was some complaint from uh, W R S about not having a larger say in what was going on in that space. And I thought the mayor. And I thought the mayor had a, a, a good response, um, when that was brought up in one of the, I can't remember if it was a council meeting or if it was a work session. But talked about the role of the government in setting that, uh, master plan and being, you know, larger in scope than the individual owners, because the owners can, can change and their priorities can change over time. But the city remains constant and the people, uh, remain constant, you know, the people with a capital P. So in that instance, when you're having those kind of competing, uh, interests, whether it's the planning commission or the city, you need to be able to take that step back and look holistically at what are the rights of the property owners? Um, and what has been put in place there? And is the proposal within scope of what the zoning allows and what the, um, the vision is for that space? The end of the day, you know, it's going to come down to what do the owners want there? And is it consistent with what the city has put in place from a zoning standpoint?
And if, if there's some sort of dispute between the city and what the owners want, is that something that you believe can be sort of negotiated out?
I think so. I mean, I've, I've always found, you know, city staff and our elected officials to be, um, very open to discussion. And that's one of the things that's, is attractive for me to, to want to get involved. You know, it's, it, you run as a nonpartisan, so you're running about yourself, you're running about ideas. And, you know, it's a city that has zero debt and has a tremendous staff. So, you know, it's a great opportunity to really have a functional city government. So when you have these kinds of, of, I don't even want to call them disagreements, but when you're trying to mesh, you know, one, we'll call it one, uh, owner's view for what they want and making sure that it meshes with the needs of the city and how it plugs into the rest of the surrounding area. You need to be able to compromise. You need to be able to bring people together and find places where you agree. And, and that's something that I've done. You know, I've never been elected to a public office, but you know, whether it's on my HOA or with my school board, you know, I've already, I already have a, a track record of bringing people together and working to find solutions. And, you know, that's something that I'm hoping to bring, uh, to our local government.
So sort of a, a final follow-up question, because we are sort of reaching the end of our time here. It sounds like the, the, your vision of economic development in Gaithersburg, uh, centers a lot around building the right kind of infrastructure, um, and creating the right kinds of conditions uh, for, for businesses and, and developers to want to come in and, and put necessary things in. Do you think that there's also a role for the city council to offer incentives of, of one type or another? Or, or do you tend to subscribe to the belief that, uh, if you build the appropriate infrastructure and create the appropriate regulatory regime, uh, folks will just want to come in?
I think it's a combination of both. I mean, the city has what's called toolbox grants available. And a number of businesses have taken advantage of that over the years. And I think, you know, we could look at expanding, you know, what those tool, um, those toolboxes can be used for. I mean, right now it's, um, you know, job training and commercial signage and build out assistance or demolition assistance. Um, and like ADA and utility updates. You know, I think we should be listening to our small business community and say, well, what do you need from the city? You know, especially coming out of the pandemic, a lot of our small businesses have been struggling. And see if there's opportunities to expand what a toolbox grant could be used for. Um, and then in addition, of course, you have those, you know, state and federal incentives as well. But maybe there's opportunities to add on an additional local incentive. I've seen, um, you know, sales tax rebates used in other spaces. Again, it's, it's kind of that, what, what opportunities can be put out there that makes us more attractive? I mean, obviously biotech is an incredibly important part of, of what's going on in Gaithersburg. And we have, you know, world-class global names here headquartered in Gaithersburg between Novavax and AstraZeneca. And that's, that's fantastic. But, you know, we need all kinds of jobs here in Gaithersburg, not just biotech, you know? Whether it's office jobs or union jobs, uh, entrepreneurs, skilled labor. You know, we need to think about what can we attract here in Gaithersburg so that people are, you know, can live and work here in the city. And then think about that infrastructure and not just sending people down county, but how do we get people to us?
Well, thank you very much for your time this evening. Uh, is there anything that you'd like, anything else you'd like to add for the voters of Gaithersburg?
I just want to, I want to thank you for, you know, providing this opportunity. I mean, ever since we lost the Gazette, it's really difficult for the, the people of Gaithersburg to know what's going on in the city. And I think the city, uh, can do, can do a better job of, of trying to reach out and, and, you know, informing people about what's going on, uh, through podcasts, through other, um, other mediums. So thank you for that. You know, as the only candidate from the east side of the city, I think it's super important that, uh, we, we have equal representation. You know, we have a, the possibility with this election that you could have 80% of the council represented by only two neighborhoods. So it's super important that we hear from all sides of our city, you know, especially being one of the most, uh, diverse in the, the city. If we're only being represented by, you know, a couple of neighborhoods that, that it really isn't taking advantage of that diversity that makes Gaithersburg so great.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
That was Andrew Sondry interviewing Gaithersburg City Council candidates. Now in reverse alphabetical order, Jim McNulty, Jamil Hernandez, Lisa Henderson, Philip Cook and Dave Belgard. If you want to know more about them, please go to the I Hate Politics Twitter or Facebook feed. We will link to their websites there. Music for this episode comes from Arlington singer songwriter Kara Levchenko, who is the choir director in Centerville High School in Fairfax County, Virginia. See you next time.